Hello, Madam Mayor and fellow councilors, and by extension, greetings to members of the Planning Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to again provide a prerecorded presentation ahead of our upcoming July 20th study session to discuss the zoning code rewrite, in this instance, to discuss the second draft of the zoning code rewrite. This is Corey Miller speaking, Senior Planner with the City of Golden, and I'm also joined by our Manager and Acting Director of Community and Economic Development, Mr. Rick Murby. And I'll give Rick the opportunity to say hello.
Yes, thank you, Council and Commission, for doing your homework and watching this video in advance. We really felt that last time it allowed a lot more discussion at the actual study session, so we appreciate all the effort you're putting in.
Yes, thank you very much, and thank you, Rick, as well. The purpose of this presentation will be to review the changes that were incorporated into the second draft of the code with respect to the direction that Council and Planning Commission provided to staff during our first joint study session on March 23rd. Of course, there's a accompanying memorandum that provides more detail regarding how each of those topics were addressed in the second code that was released earlier in June. And the purpose of this meeting, we feel, will be to determine if this group is satisfied with the proposed changes and to plot a course for the code's adoption through some final revisions and one final phase of public outreach. Before I begin the full presentation, though, it will again be important to remind us all of where we are regarding the approved schedule for the project. As you are aware, we completed our initial study session with Planning Commission and City Council in late March, and this included instructions that, again, were delivered to staff and our consultant team on how to prepare a second draft for review. And currently, we find ourselves right about here on the schedule, ready to review the second draft of the code that has been completed based on that feedback. It was originally conceived, when this schedule was approved, that we would hold this meeting prior to tying up any loose ends with the zoning code itself and in, and moving into the adoption phase of the code. However, before that occurs, we have incorporated a final public outreach phase into the rewrite process that we hope to discuss specifically the mapping of the form zones across the neighborhoods that this new zoning code would apply to. Staff anticipates incorporating the final edits associated from that public outreach into a final draft and then engaging with the public to determine if we feel the form zones themselves have been mapped properly across the various neighborhoods. We anticipate three meetings to occur, at least, to speak with the North Neighborhood area, the Central R3 Neighborhoods, and then also the Mixed Use CMU Neighborhoods. And we're anticipating a September timeframe to engage in that effort. And I advanced one of my animations a little too early, but just to close out this slide, once this engagement has concluded and once we have completed any mapping edits that resulted from those meetings, we anticipate moving into an adoption phase for the code itself. With the second draft of the code, the consultants have made numerous changes in several different categories and areas. And as a reminder, these categories were summarized in a memorandum sent to this group in April, specifically an email on April 13th. We did prepare some slides to cover these changes in the second half of this presentation. But before we get into that, we want to talk to, about the code testing that our consultants also performed around the same time that the second draft was published in early June. Testing the code was requested by the Planning Commission and City Council as part of that March 23rd discussion. And staff has worked with the consultant team to produce three simulation reports that look at three separate properties across Golden and test how the form types can be applied in those scenarios. So specifically, we looked at the North Neighborhoods R2, the Central R3 Neighborhoods, and again, the Mixed Use Neighborhoods for each of those simulations. The intent of this code testing was to provide examples of how a property could be maximized both under the current code, but also under the new code, maximized in the sense of space, bulk, number of units, et cetera. And then, one of the simulations, the third and final simulation, also looked at how the different form types that are part of this code could really be leveraged as preservation tools. So with that being said, I would like to move through one of those code-testing simulations to begin this presentation. And to set up that comparison, I want to revisit the effort that was made to accommodate character and bulk concerns back in 2019, which is when this process really began, and how these revisions built off of the intent of those changes, the revisions of the new code in a way that is better than what was originally conceived back when we made those changes and anything that the current code provides. So if you recall, back in 2019, we implemented a few changes into the code to reduce bulkiness of newer developments. These change included a restriction on the maximum block coverage that a development could occupy on a lot. It was 50% of the lot. We introduced a bulk plane regulation to help reduce the vertical bulk on the sides of development to allow for more air and more light to pass through the property. And we also included a front porch incentive to help orient the new development to the sidewalk, to the pedestrian realm. None of these changes were necessarily new to the code. The bulk plane was probably the most new element that we introduced, but they were new for the sense of the R2 and the R3 contexts. And we had a lot of meetings and performed a lot of outreach about these aspects of recent developments and how best to tailor these improvements to the code. Obviously, we heard a lot about the size of the developments being out of character, but perhaps the biggest issue we identified was that of the pedestrian experience and the appearance of these developments from the pedestrian realm itself. The diagnostic phase that the consultants put together really looked at these elements that were introduced in 2019 and their overall effectiveness that we observed being carried out through new developments. The diagnostic report also identified how the 2019 changes could be exploited by new developments. For instance, the first image that you see that I transitioned to on the right shows off how irregular-shaped lots allow for bulkier developments if the lot itself is big. So even with a limit on the development to 50% of the lot, the bigger the lot grows, the bigger the development can be within that 50% lot limitation. In addition, the lot coverage requirement didn't take into consideration the pattern of the development on the lot itself. The diagnostic report observed those patterns identifying how a development is typically concentrated towards the front of the lot, and the middle yard typically is free of development, and then the rear lot offers additional room for development, but it's usually smaller in scale to accommodate something like a garage. In addition, some of the developments that have historically come into these areas of the city incorporate long courtyard elements along the sides of the development as well. And then finally, it was observed that the bulk plane restriction, similar to the lot coverage requirement that I went over before, doesn't scale properly with the size of the lot itself. If a lot was bigger, the bulk plane restriction doesn't do much to prevent a development from growing to an excessively large size, as you see in the example on the bottom right corner of this screen. If those three lots were consolidated into one development, that yellow glass house that you see that is drawn over the lots is basically the development window that a development can accommodate. And I mention these diagnostic elements because several of these observations are corrected in the new code. To address lot coverage issues, the new code promotes different restrictions for different areas of the lot called building envelope areas, like you see in the example on the top left of this slide. The lot coverage in these areas will be different depending on the form type, but things like overall building heights, setback, and lot coverage are unique depending on which building envelope area your building is occupying. The intent of this inclusion is to better associate new developments to the existing context, accentuating the middle yard and rear development area in a manner that is consistent with the neighborhood. So you see the example on the left, which shows a diagram of the different building envelope areas and how that proposed example better matches the context and the rhythm of construction that's been established in the neighborhood. The bulk plane is another area where, oh, I'm sorry about that, a combination of differing building envelope areas free up massing along the lot's depth as different BAs have higher and lower overall building heights, with the highest building height located towards the front of the property. In addition, most of the residential form types, all of them in the core form zone, are limited to just two stories of development. We feel that this will assist with the sort of vertical scale problems that we've seen in recent developments that have been approved within the City of Golden. The size requirement of the front porch is also something that the current code doesn't really force properly. In fact, the current code only incentivizes front porches. Now, with the new code, front porches will be required, and a front porch of a substantive size will also be required, around 100 square feet, again, to accentuate that one-story element to someone within the pedestrian realm as they move throughout the neighborhoods at the sidewalk level. If you recall, I mentioned that the current rule of thumb under the new code is that the bigger the lot, the bigger the building. Under this rule of thumb, the bulk plane's ability to control bulk and scale is greatly diminished. And I repeat the example from the previous slide that you see on the top right. If you consolidate lots, your building can overall be much larger in size. Regulating the overall building size is a new element to the new code, and we feel that that will help better control the scale of constructions that come to, for instance, the core neighborhoods in R2 and R3, so that the bulk plane can serve as it was sort of originally conceived as these development windows over individual lots. So just to summarize, we feel that the new code helps better control the lot distribution, the distribution of the actual construction on the site. We have a restriction on the number of habitable stories in most instances. The maximum building areas are differentiated depending on what area of the lot your building happens to be occupying. We now have specific front porch requirements. And then also, we have requirements to load properties from the alley space so that the pedestrian realm isn't disrupted by several curb cuts along the sidewalk. So let's jump into one of the simulations itself. As I mentioned, there are three simulations available on Guiding Golden. The first simulation, and the one that we will focus on in this presentation, looks at the North Neighborhood, specifically the R2 core neighborhood. And just as a reminder, the R2 Zone District, moving forward, will establish the use that is permitted by right on the property and the overlay. In this case, the core determines the list of form types available to you, the property owner, to build the R2 uses that are permitted on the property by right. The simulations are set up in a way to show the user a sample block pattern, like you see on the image in the left, and a series of different form types that could be developed on a sample property under the new code. Some of the form types that are included in these simulations are sort of replacements for typical developments that, patterns that we've seen in the recent number of years. Some of the examples show how properties could be maximized for the total number of units on the lot. But it should be mentioned that in each of the examples provided in the simulations, the example provided maximizes out that form type to the greatest extent possible. So you're truly seeing what can be done under the new code. But I think really the best aspect of these simulations is their ability to compare what is possible on the current, or on the lot, under the current code that exists today if a property is to be maximized. The example that you see on the right that I transitioned to is of a typical duplex development pattern that we're all sort of familiar with, that has popped up over the past several years in these neighborhoods. We've seen an increase of these duplex developments that utilize two standard 50-by-140-foot lots and constructs two very large duplexes that often come very close to maximizing the bulk density standards under the current code. However, regardless of the maximum lot coverage, the bulk plane standards and the front porch aspects that were implemented in 2019, the overall size of the development is still very large, especially looking at the development from the front of the lot moving to the back of the lot. There's this long horizontal stretch of bulk. It's also important to note that these developments could have been larger. Again, that reminder of the rule of thumb that the larger the lot, the larger the development. Under this scenario, if the property owner or the developer wanted to, they could have purchased the neighboring property, consolidated the lot, and built one duplex that's double the size of one of the duplexes you see in this example. It's also very important to look at the impact of recent construction, these recent examples from the pedestrian realm. That was a very important element of the 2019 changes. The 2019 bulk plane attempted to limit the development on the third story as much as possible through those changes. And I think the intent was to ensure that the majority of the bulk of the development was contained in the first two floor plates of the development. This was, again, to better match the height of the development in the neighborhood currently, which was typically limited to structures that only occupied the first-story floor plate or the second-story floor plate for the maximum scale of the building. However, the diagnostic report identified that there is still a mismatch that occurs when you have construction that allows occupancy of the third-story area of a development in a neighborhood where occupancy, as I mentioned, is limited to really that first-story and second-story floor plate. As you see through this example, the scale of the building on the right is much, much larger through that vertical presence. So now, let's talk about how the new code addresses the typical concerns about bulk that were identified in the diagnostic report and in 2019 in a way that's better than the existing code. Again, you see the example of how the existing code has really been maximized recently on the left side of this slide. On the right, you see an example of the Village Duplex Form Type, which is the largest duplex form type permitted in the Core Form Zone overlay. But as you can see, the disposition of the Village Duplex Form Type matches the rhythm of the other structures on the block much better than the current code example on the left. I think this is largely due to the additional restrictions I spoke about earlier in the presentation that provide better control on where on the lot bulk can be permitted. And I bring up this yellow and red box to reiterate the building envelope concept that I introduced earlier in the presentation. The middle yard and rear yard of a property have more restrictive controls when it comes to lot coverage, setbacks, and building height. These building envelope areas are often split between, again, the front yard, the middle yard, and the rear yard, and most of the bulk is concentrated towards that first front half of the lot, that first building envelope area, because traditionally, that matches the pattern established in the neighborhood. But perhaps the most important element to highlight is that the building size of the Village Duplex Form Type is capped at 4,000 square feet. 4,000 square feet total, so combined for both units within the duplex. So again, where the current code would allow a neighboring property or parcel to be purchased and then consolidated to create a much larger duplex, if under this example, the property owner purchased the neighboring property and consolidated the slots, the duplex cannot get larger than the 4,000 feet that you see through this example. Looking at the Village Duplex from the pedestrian realm helps highlight the limitations we now have on the number of stories permitted to be occupied under the new code. The form zone does not, okay, it should be mentioned that the Core Form Zone does not permit any form types above two stories of habitation. One is still permitted to construct a structure to a similar maximum building height, but that is simply put in place so not to penalize those developments that want to construct a pitched roof, because pitched roofs are commonplace within these neighborhoods. And finally, all structures that abut the public right-of-way are now required to build a front porch element, where before it was incentivized. Again, this is to accentuate that first-story element closest to the pedestrian realm. So just to recap, under the current code, you're permitted to construct three stories of habitation. There is no front porch requirement. There's no cap on the total floor area beyond the lot coverage requirement of 50%. And we can, we could see through the examples that that can still allow a very large structure. And then curb cuts are allowed to be constructed, not just from the alley, but also from the front of the lot, disrupting the pedestrian realm. The new code, through the Village Duplex Form Type, caps the development at two stories of habitation. There is a large front porch requirement, and the maximum total building area is capped at 4,000 square feet. For context, the duplex permits that we've received over the past several years have been coming in at around 5,000 combined square footage for both duplexes, or in some instances, between 5,000 and 6,000 total square feet. So this represents about a 20% reduction from the size of the duplexes that have been recently reviewed in the Planning Division. So for the last example, I wanted to talk about and provide a scenario that asks, what if a development truly wanted to maximize a multi-unit structure under the current code? And the fourplex you see on the left is permitted under the current code in the North R2 Neighborhood, and it is bulky, to say the least, at around 18,000 square feet. But remember the rule of thumb, the larger the lot, the larger the development. If the developer of this project wanted to increase the size of each unit within this fourplex, they could easily do so by acquiring the neighboring parcel. The alternative multifamily maximization, if you want to call it that, under the new code, is this cluster of small, single-family cottages and duplex cottages. This is a form type that is permitted under the new code. Each of these cottages, though, whether they be a little duplex or an individual, single-family cottage, are capped at a total square footage each and a total building height. For detached cottages, the maximum square footage is 1,400 square feet, and for a combined cottage, it's capped at around 2,200 square feet. However, these developments are also controlled by a common green court, called a common court, that mimics sort of those sideyard courts I pointed out in previous examples in the code. The common courts are in place for a variety of reasons. One, they provide frontages to the units that are constructed towards the rear of the lot that cannot front the major right-of-way, like the major front street or the side street. They offer opportunities for passive recreation. Because they are common elements, they have to provide ingress and egress to the general public who can move through these developments. Also, the common court is required to be a minimum 16 feet in depth, or 16 feet wide, regardless of what area of the lot you have them interwoven through. They also are not permitted any form of parking. With the new code, we're trying to erase this new rule, or this old rule of thumb, that the larger the lot, the larger the development. And we're trying to introduce this new rule of thumb that says, when you increase your total number of units, those units have to be broken up into smaller, individual structures. Again, each one is capped at a certain square footage. They're capped at a certain building height and number of stories to be occupied. Again, just to provide an example of how these two developments differ from both the pedestrian realm, but also from across the street. And then to, again, recap that, in the fourplex, you're allowed three stories of habitation, no front porch requirement, no cap on total floor area. And then in the example of our new multifamily development, one and a half stories of habitation. There's a large front porch requirement. The maximum square footage is capped on each unit, and there is still an alley access requirement. So with that being said, I hope that you enjoyed sort of a walkthrough through one of the simulations. The simulation that's available on Guiding Golden has more information than just what I necessarily shared in this presentation. And there are two additional simulations, code-testing simulations, that you can review that are up on Guiding Golden at the end of the day, on the day of the recording for this presentation, which is the 13th of July. So with that, we'd like to transition into the changes that were made for the second draft of the code. Before I hand it over to Rick, I did want to touch on the outreach that we performed between the release of the draft on June 8th and the recording of this presentation. Again, Guiding Golden was overhauled for the release of the second draft. We really tried to provide the user as much information that detailed and outlined how the draft was updated from the first draft to the second draft. We provided a comment response field for general topics. And then we also had a survey to capture feedback on a couple data points that we were reviewing as part of the second draft. We brought back our office hours. This was a WebEx call between staff and any from the public who wished to call in. We hosted a office hour every Thursday from 4:30 PM to 6:00 PM, from June 10th to July 8th, so about five weeks. To advertise all of this outreach, we sent a letter and a water bill advertising the office hours and survey. We had a lot of social media and next-door posts, as always. And then we also supplemented that with Golden former articles. It's worth mentioning that since the release of the initial draft in January, about 1,500 individuals have explored the Guiding Golden page. And it's important to note that those are 1,500 unique logins, not just not just a few people accessing the site several times. And approximately half that number, around 611 individuals, are considered informed by the Guiding Golden platform. That means they've downloaded a document or two, or participated in a survey of some kind. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Rick. I appreciate your patience so far, but we do feel it's good to sort of talk about the code and reiterate the ways that it is an effective tool for addressing not just the concerns from 2019, but also the concerns that were identified by the consultants in the diagnostic report. But I'll turn it over to Rick, and he'll talk a little bit about how we have addressed certain elements of concern from March 23rd.
Thank you, Corey. As you mentioned, we are going to shift gears here and start talking about the changes that have been made from the first draft to the second draft. And that's really where we want to spend the bulk of the time in your discussion on July 20th, is going over those changes that were made and getting additional input on those changes. We'll highlight some questions in this process of going through the second draft changes, and we'll go from there. This first page, this first slide deals with the building form zone adjustments. So that's the area where form types exist in different parts of the community. And so we have been hearing from members of the public on some changes to the map that would make it more consistent with their neighborhood. So we've included some minor adjustments in the draft map that's up on Guiding Golden now for download. And as Corey mentioned, we'll be segueing into a process of a more detailed map conversation with the community starting in September. And so there are more adjustments to come to the map. One of the issues that was discussed in the first draft was the inclusion of the urban duplex form type, and where in the form zones they should be allowed, and whether or not they should be allowed at all. And so what has been done since that initial conversation was to remove the urban duplex from the more sensitive areas like the core areas and relegated to the higher intensity areas in the code, such as the edge, urban edge, main street, main street and strip. And that's where you would typically find larger apartment buildings and other larger structures that would be allowed in the code. So we wanted to test for that. I know there was some differences of opinion in that first draft conversation. So they are currently in the second draft in these, you know, more intense form zone areas. But we wanted to test it as well and get public opinion on whether or not the urban duplex should belong in there at all. And so I think what we have found is that the public comment we have received favors removing it entirely from the different form zones and just leaving it out for now. So that would be one of those conversations that plan commission and council should have on July 20th to determine whether or not it should be removed entirely. But I think that's where the public opinion is leading currently. Another thing we heard from that first draft conversation is that we wanted to be careful about R1 and RE. R1 has been scaled back. It does allow some form types in R1 and R1A that are more compatible with the neighborhood. The idea of being able to subdivide lots within single-family zone districts has been removed. And in fact, RE, because it is different from R1 and R1A, has been removed entirely from this current draft. And we recommend that that be a separate effort to include it later if council and commission desire to do so, where we can have a more focused conversation on RE with the community. There would need to be some different form types to be developed for RE, because it is a different height requirement and setback requirement for RE zoning than a different character, frankly, from R1, because it is meant for those larger, more rural-style lots. So that's where it stands on RE currently, and we can move on to the next slide, which is zeroing in on the form type adjustments. So through the conversations we've had since the first draft, and actually, you know, while the first draft was out, we knew we had to address the more steep-sloped properties in the residential areas. There exist in Golden a number of uphill lots that would not be conducive to some of the form types, especially the ones that are alley-loaded, because access would be limited. But also the slopes themselves limit the amount of vehicular access through the side. We came up with some uphill house and uphill duplex form types to address that. And so that is something that we can use in some of those neighborhoods. We actually would recommend that we explore that further and perhaps add other form types in the future, not for this not for this current effort, but explore the option of other form types to complement these, say, the uphill triplex, for example. Part of the updates to the form types that have been made, also just clarifying some things in the code, such as the number of dwelling units that are allowed and where ADUs are permitted in different form types, and that was added to the 1829 document. And we also wanted to make sure we cross-reference form types and form zones better. So you'll see in the second draft, not only the links throughout, the contextual links throughout the draft for 1829, but also the interconnectedness with the form types and form zones, so you can better understand what's allowed in each. And next slide, please. Parking was something that was discussed during the first draft as well. There was a request for consideration of some parking allowances for commercial parking. That has been taken out. We now have all the parking referring directly to 1836 requirements. That's chapter 1836 is where our parking requirements are generally found, and we've been taking on an extra effort to make sure that that 1836 consolidates parking in the code. And so where it was in 1840, for example, it's now in chapter 1836 to simplify and make it more user-friendly. There is one suggestion that staff in the consultant group came up with related to parking requirement for small-scale personal service uses. And so this would be an allowance that we would like to propose to council and commission for a discussion on July 20th. And that is where you have these small-scale structures, these cluster-type developments that you see here on the left, and that Corey went over in his portion of the presentation. We want to be able to have commercial uses there that are low-impact and would function in that character-driven model for development that Cluster provides. So those uses would, in this scenario, would allow reduced parking around businesses that have uses such as, you know, salons and personal services and personal training and dentists. Those types of low-impact uses would allow fewer parking spaces and would be limited to eight or fewer patrons at any given time. And it should be noted that that is also tied to square footage. So 1,000 square foot or less structures would require one parking space for those service uses, and then over 1,000 square feet would require two parking spaces. Again, all of those limited to patrons or less capacity in the way the structure is formatted. So this would really allow this mix of uses that we find so valuable in our neighborhoods, especially where CMU zoning is currently, to flourish without creating too much impact on the neighboring residents and surrounding neighborhood. So staff would also suggest further study of mixed-use parking requirements going forward, not in the context of this particular effort for the code rewrite, but looking at parking in general, a larger parking study and also mixed-use parking requirements would be helpful to get the type of development we want, as long as we make sure we get the adequate parking that's needed. And I know that was discussed at some length in the first draft conversation back in March. And next slide, please. One of the goals of this code rewrite effort is to preserve the context and the character of our neighborhoods. And so we wanted to, between the first draft and the second draft, we wanted to strengthen the preservation effort in the code and make it much more of a viable option for people to choose. And so we came up with this idea of the mostly-preserved structure. And you'll find that in chapter 1829 now in the second draft, which defines this further than I'll be able to here on this slide. But essentially, it allows existing houses and duplexes an incentive to preserve the structure that's currently on the lot. So the way it's framed, if it's 75% of the existing structure and its roof are preserved, they are given a special allotment of development area that they would normally not have. So instead of scraping the property of these usually older, smaller structures on the front of the lot, we want to incentivize their preservation and move the development area around a bit to accommodate that. So where Corey was talking about those building envelope areas, the front, middle, and rear part of the lot, essentially what this allows is to have the middle part of the lot have the same type of requirement or building allotment as the, have the middle lot have the same allotment as the front of the lot. So you can see in the image on the left, you can see before the addition on the top there, where there's a smaller structure and an open area in the back. This preservation method would allow the bulk to go into that middle area in order to preserve the smaller, lower-scale use at the front of the lot and more open area at the front of the lot as well. So you're kind of flipping the front and the middle in this instance. And it's a bit of a trade-off here, but we think overall, with the effort to try and preserve character, this is a good thing to offer. So we want to highlight that, and if council and commission want to discuss on the 20th, we would like to do so. This middle, this mostly-preserved structure status would be decided upon by the Historic Preservation Board where these lots are found within the historic district themselves. So the 12th Street District, the 8th and 9th District, and the East Street District would all be decided upon by the Historic Preservation Board in their review process. Elsewhere in these areas, where it's outside of the district, that would be the staff decision, making sure, verifying that it's the 75% preservation of the existing structure and the roof in order to get that middle zone allowance there that I Next slide, please. This slide focuses on the process. We talked a bit about that at the first draft conversation as well. And so I want to go over the version that is proposed in the second draft. So after that discussion of the first draft, we went forward with a proposal to have site plan review to be an administrative process going forward, as long as those requests are strictly following this new code. So if there were any deviations from that, that would of course involve a public process. But if it's a matter of checking to make sure that the new code is being followed, that is something that we are proposing staff do. And we would still have the allowance of requiring neighborhood meetings, just like we do in the current code. That was an addition that was added back in 2019 to allow staff discretion to require a neighborhood meeting. And that has been helpful in certain instances, and we would like to keep that requirement in here as well for availability on those more tricky lots, where we might want to get some extra input from residents before things move forward as a formal application. This new process, this administrative process that I just mentioned, would create a public review of the application on Guiding Golden. Staff would perform an analysis, just like we do today, with a staff memo and all the application materials that are required, which includes the site plan itself and the elevations and other considerations that go into one of these applications. And that would be posted on Guiding Golden for a period of 15 days to allow the public to review what was submitted and what staff's analysis was and the decision that was made as to whether or not complied with the code. If there is a feeling that certain criteria have not been met in the new code, council in the form of two council sponsors would have the ability to call up this application to have it reviewed by planning commission, specifically those elements that are not thought to be meeting the criteria in the code, and have planning commission go over that more thoroughly in a review process and in a public review process. And any deviations, again, as I mentioned previously, any deviations from the new code would still require that public process of some form. And I'll outline those next. So I want to remind everyone the commission would still review requests for things like variances, special use permits, any zoning changes, annexations, and right-of-way vacations. And then there's another process that's been outlined in the new code called the special form type permit. And so that is an instance where if someone, an applicant, comes in and they see our form types in the various form zones, and they say, "We have a different version of a special form, a special form type that we would like to propose," they can have a public review of that, similar to the way the rezoning process works today. So if they wanted to deviate from the form types, they would submit their application that would first go to planning commission for review and a recommendation to city council. And then council would review and decide whether or not that special form type that's being applied for is suitable for the neighborhood. And that would be a much more discretionary review process. Is this really meeting the the elements of the comprehensive plan and the spirit of this code? And it's just a deviation that complies with the overall community goals, but is different than what is allowed in our catalog of choices in 1829. I think we're ready for the next slide. There are some other updates that have been made. And one of the changes is chapter 1840, which is, if you're familiar with our current code, chapter 1840 is where much of our site plan analysis happens now, as far as compliance with the zoning code. This is where the site plan regulations are found. And since most of that has been moved to chapter 1829 in this new framework, where the form types and form zones are, 1840 has actually gotten quite a bit smaller. And it's relegated to things such as landscaping. We have a whole section on landscaping, screening, sidewalks, and accessory structures in Division 1 of 1840, the new 1840. And the sustainability menu is still found there in 1840. And we've also revised the landscape standards to require 15% zirik plantings, and that's more detailed and outlined in the new 1840 as well. We heard a lot about the requirement, we should up our requirements for zirik plantings and be more water-wise in our requirements. So that is better addressed in 1840. We heard pretty loud and clear in the first meeting that 25% commercial standard should be retained in the mixed-use definition. So that has been reinstated into the code in 1828. So a special use permit would still be allowed as far as an application goes for those who want to deviate from that. And again, that would still be a planning commission review process, but the 25% standard has been reinstated. And one of the things that we wanted to highlight is the study that was done, our friends in Public Works commissioned a study for our water tap fees. And the result, I think, is pretty exciting for this code. We wanted to make sure that our water tap fee structure was not disincentivizing some of these smaller structure form types that we've been showing you in the draft code. And so if you look at the water tap fee study, the initial results of that study are included in your packet. the initial results of that study are included in your packet. But this is a method of providing water tap fees in a much more equitable fashion. And I think planning staff in particular favors option two in that tap fee study result page. But please take a look at that and you'll see that tap fees are much more tied to the size of the structure and the size of the lot rather than a more one-size-fits-all approach that we use currently. So I think that gives us a more equity-driven fee structure in the future. And the full results of the study will be forthcoming, but we wanted to get that initial look at this so that you understand that we are addressing the fees the fee associated with water taps, which is a pretty significant part of a development consideration and any applicant's consideration of what they want to do on a given site. I think with that, we are out of slides. And we want to thank you very much for hanging with us through this presentation. We know it was fairly lengthy, but we wanted to make sure that there was a common understanding prior to our meeting on July 20th of where we are and where we've come from. And so we can really devote that July 20th meeting to a discussion of the second draft updates and any other remaining issues that council and commission would like to raise before we move forward with more of a final draft. I'll give Corey an opportunity to make any closing remarks he has, but we look forward to our conversation on July 20.
Thank you, Rick. I would also like to just say thank you for staying patient. Again, in this presentation, we look forward to the meeting on the 23rd, and we hope this was informative for you. So with that, enjoy the rest of the day, morning, afternoon or evening, whenever you might be viewing this, and we will see you next week.
Thank you.